Alright, we're gonna go ahead and get started. I'm gonna call to order the village council meeting, February 14th at 7:04. We can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we're gonna follow that by a moment of silence for our students at Oxford and Michigan State University.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam caller, call them all please. Laurie Borjo, here. Kelsey Cook, here. Maureen Helmuth, here. Allison Kemp, here. We have a quorum, and there are motions to approve the agenda.
There's no changes in any motion to approve the agenda for February 14th.
Support. Motion made by Helmuth, supported by Borjo. Any discussion? Are there none? All that's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion carries. Number five on the agenda presentations, we have none. Number six, call to the public. I wanted to note that we did receive several pieces of correspondence that are appropriate for public comments. They are in regard to Agenda Item 9C regarding parking on Scripter Court. We received correspondence from Matt Colley, Stonebell, Ryan and Paige, Camille, and David Reidenauer, all opposed to making any changes to the parking on Scripter Court.
Would you like those on our end for the record?
Yes, please. Thank you. So now is the time for anyone to address council. If you'd like to, please step up to the podium and say your name. You may state your address. It can be about anything you'd like to address council on. We do have a three-minute limitation, so I'll keep time, and feel free to make comments. We will have another opportunity towards the end of the agenda for additional public comments. Feel free to step up. Thank you. Evening.
My name is Carl Swider, and I'm here with my wife, Dawn. We reside at 28 Scripter Court and have lived in Oxford for nearly 20 years. Since moving to Scripter Court in January 2019, this narrow dead-end street has been problematic, as outlined in our letter, which is included in your meeting package. Since there are only nine parking spaces to serve 18 homes, excuse me, 16 homes, street parking should be limited and temporary. We support the elimination of the overnight parking on Scripter. All residences have two or, in many cases, three-car garages with additional parking for up to four cars on each driveway. That should be sufficient, as this is a single-family condominium community. We want to feel safe in our home, and we do not at this point. We need to be able to enjoy our property without obstruction, and we cannot at this point. And we want to enjoy free access to our driveway, which is sometimes even blocked by cars. That this has not been the case is why we're here tonight and why we wrote the letter appealing for your help. We appreciate the response from both the police department and from the fire department, which were very interested, especially the fire department noting that the difficulty of getting to fire hydrants. That's especially concerning, because if you presented that response to our insurance company, I can imagine what the insurance company would say. Eliminating overnight parking will ensure the safety, security, and improve access for snow removal and emergency vehicles for all residents of this community. I think it's a win for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Would anyone else like to speak? Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Brian Cleats here, Director, Oxford Public Library. It's been a while since I've been to a council meeting, so I just wanted to brief you on the situation and update you on the fire status. As many of you know, we did have a fire on a rooftop unit a couple of days before Thanksgiving. That fire was isolated to that rooftop unit. However, we did receive about $250,000 worth of smoke damage throughout the entire building. We were able to work with a bunch of people from various companies to turn the building around and present it back to the public in just three weeks. When I met with the insurance company to renew our policy, they had stated that that was really unprecedented time to turn a building around to the public. So, I have to say to the team at Jarvis, who worked with us to make that happen, and all of the contractors, we're very grateful. I also want to take a moment to thank our Oxford Fire Department. They are amazing. While I was still on the roof assessing the damage and communicating to the alarm company the situation, they were already pulling onto the boulevard. It's quite amazing that they were able to get there in such a fast amount of time, and that they also knew that coming into a library, we just don't pull in hoses and turn them on. So, it's great to have such a knowledgeable team in this community, and we're very grateful to the hard work and dedication that they bring to the table. And all of the first responders who were there that evening were eternally grateful. So, at this point, the public library has been back open to the public a week before Christmas, and we're busier than ever. So, it's great to have everybody back in, and we are very happy to see everybody's faces again. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name's Joe Moore. I live at 7 Scripter Court. I'm here with my wife, Misty. I'm all support. First, I'd like to thank you for recognizing the tragedy yesterday that I'm a shoe. As you probably guessed, I'm here to talk about parking over on Scripter Court. Parking on the, parking's oil lot on the south side, that was authorized by the fire department, and that was accepted by the village when the village took over the road. I don't know how parking during the day would affect, would be affected differently than parking overnight to the fire response. The hydrants are, are able to be accessed. I know there's a hydrant on the first house. There's a hydrant over by my house, and that's on the north side of the road. And I believe there's a hydrant on the newer side of the road further down. I don't know if there's any hydrants on the south side and how that would affect it. The way I look at it is if there's an issue, we address the issue. You know, if, you know, if there's an issue with somebody blocking somebody's driveway, then we have a great police department, and they'll come out and hopefully handle that. I haven't had any issues, but again, I'm on the north side of the road, and I'm the first house. We are mostly families with children. We have everything from newborns, which is not here today, to up through teenagers, all living at home, right? So, we have friends that come over, and I'd rather, I'd rather my, my children have their friends come to us as opposed to going and hanging out over at the park or something, and not being supervised, we'll say. That's why we moved here. It was a family, family community. Now, I understand, we had, at the beginning of our, our sub, when our first open, we had some issues with parking on both sides, so the HOA installed additional signage. I helped install those signs to ensure that it was marked properly on the north side of the road, because I think we only have one or two signs. So, we put up a couple extras. So, I guess, I, I do oppose regulating parking on, on the south side of the street. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Sarah Nady. I live at 36 Scripter Court, so of course I'm here to talk about parking. I'm here with most of my family. However, we currently have three licensed drivers and one part-time driver living in our house currently. While we have a two-car garage, my oldest daughter works until midnight, sometimes one in the morning, whereas my husband and I often leave between 6:00 and 6:30. The expectation that she can park her vehicle in the driveway and we can both get around in the morning safely is not realistic. When I built and purchased this home, it was with the understanding that my teenage daughter would be able to park safely in the street. She does every night in front of my house. I have no problems with that. I also, however, am lucky enough to live on the side of the street that has parking allotted. If she stays with us for years, I'll have a third driver in my house. They work for an automotive company, so they will have their own vehicles. And I'm not talking about possibly five vehicles in a two-car garage house. To me, I understand the frustrations of our neighbors. However, it is not a realistic expectation that I can have all of the vehicles in my house parked in the driveway, that we can all effectively come and go as we need to get to our jobs. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hey, how are you tonight? Devin Crummels, 29 Scripter Court, so good to talk about parking. So, the car that's causing the issue actually belongs to my house. So, I have a work car, my wife has a van, and I have a truck. We have just purchased this house last summer. We moved from South Carolina. We're originally from here. We have a small, narrow driveway, and we have a one-year-old, a two-year-old, and a seven-year-old. So, clearly, our garage is filled with toys. You know, we're having a good time. In the meantime, my sister-in-law moved from Nashville Tennessee. She's young. They're just getting started. We're trying to help them out. They are staying with us. They are moving out in June. They'll have enough money to buy their own house. In the meantime, their cars once in the street with us, so we have the same situation going on. We cannot park on my side of the street, where I'm glad they put it in front of my house. We even have a neighbor right now who's gone for a little bit, and they've let us use their driveway for parking. They've been curious, saying, hey, you can park the car there, but I would hate to make a permanent situation, because one day my seven-year-old will get a car, and she will have to park in the street. I would hate to make a permanent situation out of a situation that's going to end, that's causing this issue pretty quickly here. So, appreciate your time, though.
Thank you for your comment.
My name is Eric Schwart. I live at 25 Scripter Court.
This is a full block party.
Are you all here?
Did you not bring the pop?
We are a pretty close community. It is all, it's a dead-end street with 16 houses on it. And we are, we do the cookies, you know, giveaway. We do boo things for Halloween. We even do a block party in the summertime. So, we are a pretty open street. Everybody knows each other pretty well. And the comments that everybody has made so far today, I completely agree with that. With that being said, I am a father of three kids and a wife, and my number-one job is to protect my family. At that point, I have a two-car garage and two parking spots. Soon, we will have five vehicles also, along with others on our street. That means one person's gonna have to park off-site. Where is that off-site? There is no public parking by our street. That means I have to tell one of my kids, or my wife, or myself to go park where, and walk in the dark, in the morning, at night, to their vehicle. It's not safe. This is a topic of safety for our community. That's just people in my family. I also have relatives that come in out of town, that stay long weekends with me. Where do they now park? I have to tell them to go park their car behind a movie theater, at the bank, leave it there overnight, unattended. I find all of that inexcusable, because it's, as it's been said, we purchased our lots. We did our due diligence. We asked if we could park on the street, and the answer was yes. When we built our home, that was assured that we could park on the street for the safety of our family and our friends. And to have that taken away from me as a father, that hurts. I'll pay the fine every time to make sure my family is safe as they come and go for my home. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Key Saga, 21 Scripter Court, adding to the block party. I am here also to oppose not being able to park on the street, or not be able to, I'm opposed to selling as we can't park on the street. I have two young children, as I already said, and in a short period of time, we're gonna have all teenagers and kids that are gonna need parking spots. I also have a unique perspective on this as well that was shared based on Carl's presentation when he started us off. As of recently, last year, I was present in the HOA board. As Joe had mentioned, prior to, whenever we moved in, we had a little bit of a growing pain to what side of the street we could park on. North side, south side, and we were thinking we could park on the south side because the fire is from the north side by the, by the fire department. We had many and many discussions as a community, and many, many HOA, or multiple HOA agendas based on it, because people were, I wouldn't say abusing it, but not learning where we had to park. So, we had to bring up multiple times. Carl and Dawn, during those full HOA meetings, were not able to be present, so my job was to go to them and to present to them what our HOA agendas were, and to kind of give the perspective as well, to kind of present to everybody as a proxy almost. In my conversations with Carl and Dawn, it was presented to me that, yes, they did not let you park in front of their house. They actually want us to change the rules and allow parking on the north side and not necessarily on the south side. Based on those conversations is my perspective that if this was, if we were allowed to park on the north side and not the south side, we would have this discussion today, because we would not be in front of their house. I do not believe the rest of the street should be punished, because one couple, one home does not want parking in front of their house. I also, my perspective based on the conversations, if you allow no parking in front of their, in front of their house, again, we would not have had this conversation. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
Alright, last parking person. Well, I do, the designer side of me does support no parking on the street. It's the analitiveness, and I like everything organized. It's impractical for everybody, those families and teenagers learning how to drive and all that. And, you know, HOA President currently took over after Keith, and I'm just here to support everyone else on the block. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Yes. It's still on the agenda.
Okay. Any other public comment? Oh, I'm sorry.
Hello, I'm Haley Todd. I am the daughter of Sarah Nady. I reside at 36 Scripter Court, and I am said daughter that parks in the street. Like my mom said, it is more likely possible for me to park in our driveway, considering the fact that my parents get up at 6:00, 5:00, 6:30 in the morning to leave for work, and I get home between the hours of 11:30 and 1:30. So, I oppose the change of parking.
Thank you for your comment.
She leaves in the ear for the last daughter, though?
Not for her, I'm guessing, maybe eight more years.
Right, yeah. The last week, my mom has been already...
Sure, okay.
Okay, I think what has been said about people parking in front of our house is why the problem exists. But what hasn't been said is our house is the only house, pretty much, that people park in front of. And usually, there are at least two, and often as many as four cars in front of our house and the two houses on either side of us. That's four cars in the nine available parking places on the block. It is excessive, it is inconsiderate, and it is unfair.
Thank you for your comment. I'm gonna make a motion to deny the request to eliminate overnight street parking on Scripter Court.
Well, I'd like to have a conversation about it.
You have to, you want to support my...
I know, I support it. I'll, I'll support it for the...
The motion I'm opposed to, I need to support it...
I support it for discussion.
Okay, motion made by Cook, seconded by Helmuth. Discussion.
First of all, when all your kids get cars, there's not gonna be places for them to park. You guys are gonna have way too many kids with way too many cars. I think you have a great homeowners association, you're all here, you know what the problem is. You should be able to stay back off their property. If there's other parking spaces, don't park in front of their house, use one of the other You're all adults. Don't get this, be, oh, I hate those people, they want to get close to the, the parking. Just use their house last. There's plenty of street parking in front of your own homes. Use those. Don't block the driveway. Make sure they can get in and out of the driveway. Make sure the garbage man can get to their garbage. I think you guys all have good arguments. I have kids, my kids park in the streets, their friends park in the streets. I don't let them spend the night anymore. But, don't let it become a problem, and then we won't have to do anything. You know who your neighbors are. Don't park in front of their house, 24/7.
I agree. So, this is our discussion. So, I think that, that's what I was gonna say. This is a HOA issue, this is a neighborly issue. It's not necessarily a village council issue, but because the requested comes for us, we want to provide a decision on it, so...
I don't, I don't think you're wrong to ask. I'm lucky no one looks across from me. So, my kids park in the street, they're not annoying, they're not annoying anybody. I'll come people, but that's on purpose. You guys have good arguments, your kids gonna have cars, you gotta park them somewhere. Someone's gonna have a graduation party, there's gonna be family. Make sure the fire department can get down to their house when it burns up. Make sure everybody's parking properly.
I will say that, I'm gonna kinda, from the perspective of a mom with a teenager, we'll say, however, I apologize to the neighbor that, that, you know, but my son is gonna be parking where it's mostly for him to get in when he's dark out and he's parking. And I'm sorry if that means this is pretty costly, but there's gotta be some, you know, everybody's gotta have some goodwill towards each other, and, you know, I would never agree, I personally would not feel good about changing parking to not. I was gonna suggest parking to one side, but it sounds like that's already taken care of as the HOA. When there's a parking allowed, we don't have the right to say which council to say which house to go back in front of or not. If there's a reason, if there's something like a hydrant there or something, then I think, and, but I do agree, there's these neighborhood battles that, you know, if they have an action where it's, but that person said they don't like it swaying apart in front of their house on purpose. You know, it just sends some goodwill towards each other and some understanding. But I, I agree that parking on one side makes logical sense. When you're letting people get as close as you can to the sidewalk, so they can get in there.
Any further discussion? I can call a roll?
So, yes, but yes, no, yes.
So, the motion was to deny the request to modify the parking situation. And it was made by Cook, seconded by Helmuth. So, you'd say, yes, if you agree, that it should be denied? Borjo?
Yes.
Helmuth? Kemp?
Yes.
And Cook? Yes, motion carries. So, the parking will stay as it is.
So, those of you who are here for 9C new business, we just handled that, so you don't have to stay for, it's my idea, it's my idea to let you go home. It's all good.
I was just gonna say, all the kids you brought, you can just leave them here.
Maybe girls come here, because I'm looking for girls.
Ally, looking for girls, guys.
Right there.
Go home.
You got any with her?
Billy, go take them up, man.
Yeah, she has a girl.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, 'cause they would come limp, rip, and all stop, and the girls would be showing up. Look in the freezer, they don't stay in the freezer.
And they're like, look in the freezer.
I know, I don't, but I go and get them, they're gone.
What the tank?
Huh? He's in the freezer.
What are the two parts?
All about some person dropped, it's got confused.
So small, sorry.
Consent Agenda Item 7A.
If there's no questions, I'll make a motion to approve, send it to the items A, 1, 2.
Support. Motion made by Helmuth, supported by Borjo. Any favors, say aye? Aye. Any nay? Motion carries. Consent Agenda Item B.
I will make a motion to...
You ready to do it?
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve, consent to item B, 1, 2, 3, including the bills of the amount of $151,000, $826,000, consent.
Support. Motion made by Helmuth, supported by Borjo. Any discussion? Are there none? Roll call, please. Helmuth?
Yes.
Borjo?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Cook? Yes. Those are approved, thank you. Moving on to unfinished whole business. First up is our TV project update at 32 East Baric. Welcome, Mr. Weckel.
I missed your suggestion. I didn't know you wanted to get up early, earlier than Scripter Court. But this is, this is, we're good. Okay, that's what I thought. I'm here to give you a progress report on building at 32 East Baric. Probably the most important thing at this point is the garage's been removed. We have, I have a quick list of things that have been accomplished, but in order to keep the meeting fairly short, if I can answer your specific questions, I can do that.
I actually haven't driven by in several weeks.
Can I go to the post office, move, get some...
Hi, okay. Windows are...
Windows are all in, except for the garage, where the garage door is. That's gonna be, be remaining a garage door until the underground plumbing is done.
Will you bring all your supplies?
Yeah, the elevator rods are very long, so we want that open until those are finished. Now, I already have the window frame and the glass, just I'll have to take the door out and fill in the block. The doors are the other part of the glass. The north and south entry may be in order. I expect them yet this month. So, that'll close it off, a little bit prettier.
Yeah, the gate well, sorry, I didn't hear you. The gate well and valve installation, is that the underground plumbing you're talking about?
That's done, yes.
No, the underground plumbing, we tell them with all the floor drains.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Floor drains, okay.
Yeah, the gate well is done, though.
That's something, okay.
Joe moved in yet?
Say that again?
Did Joe move in yet?
Oh, Joe, no. Oh, Joe, no, no. Yeah, we're still talking about that.
What are the next steps?
Well, the next step for us, well, once those doors are in, then we can start putting siding on the towers. Our main step is to have the buildup for the first floor, so we can get started on that. We've got a little bit of an issue, actually, it's quite a large issue. My architect is in intensive care, and he's semi-retired, a one-man show, so any amendments to the drawing are gonna be very difficult. So, I will be into the office on Thursday morning to discuss, you know, what we have to do. Stefan Hoffman, he's the one that designed the building originally, and then he had this bone marrow transplant three or four years ago. And that worked well, but then had a little bit of relapse in December and January. He actually got COVID, COVID pneumonia, so they had him induced coma in ICU to come and improve. That's all I can, that's all I know, so I hope he gets out soon.
The architect for the first floor, that's, that's right, or he was that?
No, it's the same, it's the same architect, he, Amanda had problems with three architects. She begged me to give mine, I said, "I don't want to put any pressure on you, and how you'll be able to perform," we actually got the drawings done, everything she wanted, very quickly, in about three weeks. And there's some changes that have been made, and we'll see how we handle it, I guess, I don't know. Obviously, we're gonna follow the code, we're repairers, but I don't know if I'll build another architect to assume responsibility. That's what they would have to do, with the drawings. I don't know how long that's gonna take, so I don't like these delays. Dave, we don't know all the changes when you come in for the meeting. I have a list, I don't know if it's all of them, it's a list that I have, that I know had to be changed, several were being discussed already. The more, the more policy you can be to having all of them, we can have our building personnel look at things, and there's maybe some administrative approvals that can... Yeah, well, that's... Keep it going while, you know, as long as we're not drifting from the code. Right, well, that's what I was hoping, several were on his list, and I have to go over it, show him some things on the drawings that apparently were overlooked. It's in the review letter, and the things that probably can be changed easily, for example, is the water heaters. He has gas hot water heaters, well, we're gonna use electric, on-demand electric hot water heaters instead. I think that that would be something that would probably change. We could probably accommodate that administrative work. That's what I'm planning to attach, but the more you can come and complete lists to keep the progress, the better. Correct, well, we've been approved for our plumbing and our mechanical, our mechanical has to be changed also, though, because we wanna use stainless steel heat changers in the furnaces. And he specified a standard furnace, but these are little things that I think can be changed without having another architect involved. And there's some, I wish he was around so I could tease him, but there's some spelling errors in there. For example, one place he has EXIST, in our trade, it means existing, and it's supposed to be EXIT, and a totally different meaning, though. But I can show, yeah, I think, I think we could work it out.
To expedite any proof, so the underground plumbing, yeah.
Plumbing's been approved. Yeah, and mechanical's been approved, it's electrical. All right, let's not, let's not let this stop, I think is your point.
Yes. Dave, can you, will you send us a summary of the meeting?
Let's see, I guess, what are the next steps to get the parking lot done?
We actually have that contracted to start the last week of March, when they're permitted. And they tell me that they'll have it ready in approximately two weeks from the day they start for payment. So, hopefully, we're gonna pay dearly for what we've been getting.
Yeah. And then is that the point where the dirt where the garage demo was done would get leveled out, or would that be done before?
Yeah, that's when they do it, all at one time.
Yeah, okay, just for aesthetics, I was curious, the fence there, I think, really helps the neighbor, but...
Well, he, he told me it was happy, he was happy with it, but, you know, I don't see how much difference it really made, but he's happy.
Yeah, he's happy, so that's good. Any other questions from council?
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you very much. Next up on the agenda is the museum use agreement, update, and Mr. Davis, do you wanna have a summary of that?
I've looked at the, oh, I looked back there, Brian, you were not there. I received and reviewed the red line or the ads or whatever, I didn't see any issues, I think we should get a final document and get it approved.
So, Cook, do you have anything you wanna bring to council attention, or are you satisfied with the agreement, or do you accept the changes this event?
Upon reviewing the agreement with the museum board, or the Northeast Open Historical Society Board, I should say, we made our recommended changes known to Mr. Mador, and he assumed them, shared them with Mr. Davis, and you have those revisions in front of you. As long as we're all in agreement with this last revision, I don't see any reason why we can't move forward at this point.
Okay, good work, Brian.
All right, and I do know, too, that, it is my understanding, and our treasurer and board member, Miss Pissard, is here as well this evening. It's my understanding that a knock box for the fire department is going to be installed so that they have emergency access to the building. So, is that correct, Sue?
Yes.
Yes, so, already in progress, thank you.
Sue, thanks for working on this.
Thank you.
You are.
I move to approve the lease agreement between the Village of Oxford and the Northeast Open Historical Society Incorporated, as presented with the changes as made in our packet. Motion made by Cook, supported by Kemp, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, both please. Yes?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Helmo?
Yes.
Orjo?
Yes.
Motion carries, agreement is approved on our end.
Mo, you noticed how I highlighted the change instead of tracking, so it was a lot larger and easier to read.
I did appreciate, a larger font would be good, too, but this is...
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Sue.
We're all growing to need larger fonts.
Yep, yep, and I did that with my questions for today, you noticed my, like, 20 font?
I appreciate that.
No problem. Next up on the agenda, unfinished businesses are crosswalk considerations, Westford at Fennett and Pontiac at F O E S. Looks like there's no recommendation at this time, maybe just an update.
Just kinda telling you in where we're at as it goes with process, Chief and I met with Mr. Brown, Principal, out there in the snow for a while. But the recommendation, and his obvious choice for him is the north end, right by the 3, but he agreed with us, unless there's a person there 100% of the time, then it's the worst choice. So, 100% of the time, having someone there is really not feasible, so we're probably gonna just go back and go forward with our original location down the south end. There's no way of guaranteeing we'll always have someone there, they would have someone there, we would have somebody, the police would have somebody at that crosswalk during hospital hours.
Any questions from council at this time? Hearing none, we will look forward to new business, this is our, A, council vacancy application consideration interviews. So, we have, just for all council applicants, council has four questions for each of you, we really don't expect it to take more than five minutes. So, don't feel like we need to talk a lot, if you don't want to, you can answer the question, we'll each ask a question. I know Mr. Mador has asked or made a suggestion, this is a public meeting, so you have every right to stay here and listen the entire time, but if...
Sure, Mr. Mador, I did have an email for you or a phone number, so I didn't have time to send the letter out, I sent an email to all other four candidates saying, as a courtesy, I would be asked that you would hang out in the community room while each person interviewed, and hang out over there. But again, it's a public meeting, nobody has to leave, anyone could stay, but I'd be happy to share, escort, anybody who wants to leave for the room, allow them to interview, without others listening. I'll, I'll share it for them, then I can always show them.
Why don't you take them all initially, then we'll bring back in the first one?
Okay. Very good.
I'll take out, just to... Did you go back on?
So... Before we start, I just wanna, I'm not a voting member, but the first candidate, Dean, I've known him probably since he was 10 years old, he makes a lot of, he was, he was maybe one of the most talented martial artists I've ever met, and I was Kramer in the back of the room through my second-degree black belt. Dean was light years ahead, and when he was 10, I was able to kick his butt, and when he was 15, I didn't go anywhere near him. I just wanted you to know it all.
Okay, thank you. So, you won't join in any discussion?
I wouldn't anyways, but I...
Are you sure?
Maybe. I got right into the cookie thing.
Well, thank you for letting us know.
I just wanted you to know that I've known him for, since he was a very young man.
Are we inviting them to stay after?
They're welcome to, I think, Joe, you'll let them know that they are welcome to come in after.
Yes, and that was in the letter I sent to them, I just, it'd be nice if you, after you interviewed, would back out again, it's a free request. Justin Wolcott just chose to remove himself from the council.
He did?
Yes, he says, "You know, I thought about it, I run for commissioner again, I won't go do it all," and I had a witness, and he says so, and he is at home.
Want to bring in the first one?
Okay, any particular, the first one who applied was Mr. Mador, then Emily Bush the next morning, if you'd like to find and follow that order, or if you want to, when your sheets were, it doesn't matter.
I'm on a sheet.
Okay, that's a good point, you see that? Is it best to have like people in the game?
Yeah.
You're good, all right.
I think that might seem to apply for vacancy.
Had I told you?
Yes, awesome, yes, thank you. Welcome, thank you so much for your interest in serving on Village Council, so...
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, could you state your name, just so I know how to pronounce it correctly?
Dean DePhilippi.
DePhilippi, thank you.
I'm gonna get that wrong.
All right, people do for a while.
Okay, I'll start with the first question, just tell us about your background, please.
Would you like my personal background, like, in the community, or like, what I do?
Maybe a little bit of both.
A little bit of both?
Yeah.
So, my family moved here from Rochester Hills in 1999, I was in this area up until I left for Grand Valley, I attended Leonard Elementary, Oxford Middle School, St. Joseph's School, and Notre Dame Prep, studied at TNC Martial Arts all through that time. Went to Grand Valley, got my first degree, came back a little bit afterwards, I had some time over in the St. Corsores, and I've been teaching music ever since, up at where Oxford School of Music was, now Red Piano. Then I've done work in landscaping with Hardscapes Landscape Construction under Jeff Kozlov for quite a bit of time before I went to Grand Valley. I hang out a lot around here, I do tai chi at the church, I don't know what street it is, but across from the parking lot with, sometime in the park. I've worked with concerts in the park through Matthew Wong and McCannagreen. I've been currently spending a lot of time at the library down the street in Pontiac, studying for the LSAC group. And I've been all over here, spent a lot of time in the lake, at Lakeville Lake, done stuff at Seymour Park doing tai chi there as well. It's my home, it's my community.
Thank you.
And what are you hoping specifically to accomplish by serving on council?
I guess some multitude of things, kind of piquing my interest for growing my career, wanting to go into law, I figured it would be a good chance to kinda take the reins in switching careers from teaching music and doing education. I was kinda acting as a consoler and therapist during the tragedy, tragedy last year, when I hand over my students who were at the high school, had to come and try to get a safe space and somebody to talk to and make sure that it's gonna be grounded and everything's gonna be okay. Actually, recently, today, I went to the Oxford High School and to the district office to try to find information on No Future Without Tomorrow, the student-run nonprofit organization, so that I could try to get in with them, so, try to facilitate all of that, and just grow and learn and experience what I can, spend my total life.
How do you believe the Village Council can most impact Oxford University?
That would be something that I would have to see by being at more meetings, to be honest, this is my first meeting, so far, you guys seem very, very smooth in your dealings. I've been in meetings like this all throughout college with different organizations and stuff, and it's, now, is this easy to follow and understand? Everybody's super talented, so it's cool, but yeah, that would honestly be something that I'd have to see over time with more kind of situations. So far, I think you're doing great.
We know.
You too.
It wasn't a question. If you had a job to fill this vacancy, is there other boards or commissions you're interested in serving in? Would you have vacancies, planning commission, the DVA?
It's only more.
It's only more appeals.
That would also be another thing that I would be interested in, I would have to do some research on what other vacancies are available currently, I'm very interested in kind of like public safety and support right now. I have a very extensive knowledge of martial arts and self-defense, teaching and education, so if I can help people at all feel safe in their own right, as much as they possibly can, and there's an avenue to do so, that would be my preferred.
The plan is we need to get along nicely, so we can do that.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you guys for the opportunities.
Thank you.
Thanks, Opie.
Yeah, sure.
Jerry, who's that?
Emily.
Really smooth.
Worst possible.
See us after 9 o'clock.
I'm waiting, so I know I'm breaking a lot.
Mine's already off.
Mine was off at like 4:30 today. Yesterday, I was literally typing an email at 4 o'clock, and I forgot like what I was typing, and I couldn't pick it back up, so I just closed my...
Did you ever figure it out? Where's the hot seat?
Right up at the podium.
Oh, jeez. No seat, you're staying in, okay.
Welcome, thank you for your interest in serving on Village Council, so as I said, like, four questions, I'll kick us off, so tell us a little bit about your background.
Oh, my background, they were just quizzing me in there, my name's Emily Bush, I live at 97 Edison Street, I've been a resident of the Village for 17 years. I've been a resident of the village for 17 years. I just moved eight houses around the corner from West Street. I was the only even-numbered house on the odd side of the street for 15 years. You guys, did you know that? 24th Street is on, okay. My husband, I'm married to a retired firefighter, and that drove him crazy because he always said if you called fire department and they're looking for an even-numbered house on the wrong side of, um, yeah, so anyway. I have been in sales for 25 years. I have a son that is a sophomore at the high school. I recently graduated from Michigan State University, which made yesterday even more difficult, with a master's in management strategy and leadership. And I have been compelled to serve since the tragedy on November 30th. And as some of you may know, I did run for state representative last year in the election. And it was a wonderful experience. And most people in the House District 66 gave me incredible grace based on the fact that I was running for the right reasons, I think. So that's a little bit about me.
Thank you.
Awesome question. What are you hoping to specifically accomplish by serving on council?
So as I stated, I think I was compelled to run based on what happened in our little town. I have been a mom to a son for 15, almost 16 years now, and somewhat involved in his schooling, but have been relatively quiet as a village resident. And I think sometimes when we shoulder down and move forward with our head down, and we get involved in regular everyday life and having a career, sometimes your eyes are not open to some of the things that go on in your community around you. So good, better, and different. It was really, truly that day that compelled me to serve. And so to serve the village that I've lived in for 17 years, to be a support for the people here, to be a voice for the people in the village, and to help make critical decisions for our infrastructure is one of the reasons why I want to serve.
Thank you. How do you believe the village council can most impact Oxford residents?
Infrastructure, I think, is one. I know that some things, big and small, come in front of the village every meeting. But to be able to, again, be a voice for those in the village and to also make critical decisions for business, for infrastructure, for decisions that I know are difficult to be made, especially over the summer. You guys were faced with a decision about a certain march that happened. I know that that wasn't easy, but I also know that it was very important to the kids of our district. So to be able to provide an opportunity safely for situations like that is obviously very much an outlier situation. But I would be honored to help make decisions like that. I also would like to have Dennison be a little bit more patched together and maybe paved. My husband, who moved here from Kansas City in 2018, was a little bit shocked to see that Dennison stopped right over here at Hobie and didn't continue all the way down. But I know that critical infrastructure and actually learning how the wheels of local government work in turn is also something that I think I could contribute and also learn at the same time.
But do you like your son parking the street?
He doesn't drive yet.
Will you?
Well, he does, but with.
When it's paved, will you?
No, he will park in a, he will park in a driveway.
If you're not the person chosen to serve on the council, if you're willing to let us call you and say, hey, we have a vacancy in the planning commission, you have a vacancy.
100%.
Planning board appeals, and get you into one of those.
Absolutely, yep.
Thank you. And keep your kids.
Keep that on the street. That sounded really funny. Keep your kid off the street. Isn't that my goal as a parent, to keep my kid off the street?
Thank you so much. That's all we have to do. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
If all those kids get their licenses at the same time. Like a place.
Some of you know it, some of you don't. Some are probably, I don't know, they all have that.
When did all these kids start getting cars? I work for my car. I'm like, who gets their car for 16?
I'm still trying to figure out when spring break became constitutional.
Okay, my car magically appeared, I can tell you. Seriously, though, I was.
Cell phones are granted by the constitution.
My dad owned a shop.
The constitution grants everybody a cellphone, right? And spring break.
Yeah, once you hit eight, you get a cellphone.
Oh, my gosh, she goes, Mom, I have a cellphone at eight. I'm like, where you gonna show sex?
She's got access to the player.
Good evening, thank you so much for your interest in serving on village council. So I'll kick us off, like I said before, we have four questions total, so you get one for each of us. But could you start with your name and a little bit about your background?
My name is Jacob Nicosia. I've lived in the community at 60 Pontiac in the Red Brick House, the old Bates House, if you know where that is. My wife is the granddaughter of the Bates. So as far as my background is concerned, I married well. And I met her in Chicago after growing up in Ortonville, right down the street. I moved out there for a job. I went to Oakland University to become a mechanical engineer. And my background is, is that I'm in the building trades and I build buildings. So I've got a construction background, but primarily right now, I run an advisory company and shepherd about 40 other individuals and lead them and run that company for them on the operational side.
Wonderful, thank you.
And what are you hoping to specifically accomplish by serving on council?
For me, it's about investment in our community. I have two beautiful daughters, and I really want to see them grow up in the same community that I'm familiar with and really invest in the quality of life that we've established here for the community. So I look at it as an investment for us overall. And I'm looking to accomplish to continue what we already have going here. And I guess that's about it. I love this town. It's my home, and I plan on staying here for the rest of my life.
Thank you. How do you believe the village council can most impact Oxford residents?
How can we most impact Oxford residents? I think first and foremost, we need to market, get out there and really market what it is that we're doing and accomplishing as a council and get the message out there. I would say, as somebody that's lived here since 2014, it's not always clear to me what exactly is happening. Obviously, at some of these meetings and the outcomes. So I think one of the ways that we could do that is just really focus on getting the message out and kind of talk about what it is that we are doing, whether that's on social media or whether that's just through word of mouth and holding events. I think that's one way that we could do that.
Be the right answer to the right council person.
I think we've all done that.
I've done a little reason.
How would you know you live in my favorite house? I remember when both of them were there. Just a beautiful house. I've always wanted that porch.
Thank you. It was a lot of work to redo it, let me tell you.
I remember when you couldn't walk up to their porch for all the stuff you had.
Right.
See, it's beautiful.
I heard stories.
If you're not chosen to fill the vacancy, are you interested in serving on one of our other commissions that have vacancies? Planning commissions, board of appeals?
Absolutely.
We're always looking for heads to put in the seats.
Yes, absolutely. My goal is ultimately to serve Oxford. So whatever happens here, if it doesn't, if I don't get this position, I would love to serve with any other vacancies that are available. So just being in a leadership position right now and ultimately making the hard decisions for, in my professional life, for a company or a group of individuals, leading 40 individuals. I understand that it's not always easy to make the right decision because you're always, you're not gonna make everyone happy, just as we saw here tonight. But it's more importantly about the overall community and making sure that we're heading in the right direction and making the decision that's best for everyone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all we have, thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
My daughter will also be here next month for council meeting. We're bringing her into council for Girl Scouts.
Oh, for Girl Scouts?
Yeah, so I think I saw a lot of her.
Take a look.
Yeah, we'll bring some, right?
Oh, your daughter's in?
Oh, yeah.
I lived in that house at like three years old during like a walkthrough for a sale.
I pronounce this like so.
Nicosia?
Nicosia.
I just don't.
Can we just go?
I have my own names. I just don't. Jacob, I can pronounce Jacob.
Same.
Jacob and Dean, we're talking about the best names.
Good evening, thank you so much for expressing your interest to serve on council. And I know you joined us at our last meeting too and spoke a little bit under public comment. So we really appreciate your time here taking to talk to us. So I'll start us out, and then each of my fellow council members will also ask you a question. So could you tell us a little bit about your background, please?
Sure, so I'm an engineer of 40 years with now Stellantis. Used to be Chrysler, so you guys might be more familiar with that name than Stellantis. But I've been an engineer, been a project chief, and had a chance to work with all levels of management, from a mechanic to chief of engineering, do presentations, and learned a lot about cars and how they work, but also about people. Because everybody has a little different knack of approaching an issue or a problem. And so you get a chance to see how everybody operates. And I think I should before, I'm a family man. All my kids have grown up at this point, so I'm home with my wife now. But I had a lot of experiences going to school, watching games and what have you, even traveling everywhere, you know, to see and play, so I'm a family man. And resident of Oxford here, been in a lot of Oxford activities, been part of the DDA playing music. I also was part of a walkathon, going from here to Lake Orion and raising some money. So I don't know, just more than anything else, I'm an average Joe, just trying to do the right things in life. And now that my kids are all grown, now is an opportunity to maybe serve in this kind of facility like this.
Wonderful, thank you.
And what are you hoping specifically to accomplish by serving on council?
Well, I think what my idea is, is to try to help and meld in with the group to get things accomplished. Rather be a person that's gonna help get things done rather than be an obstacle. That being said, I'm not gonna be a yes man either. I think that's important that everyone has an opinion, trying to do the best job of whatever that task at hand is. So I'm a believer of Oxford and its development, and it's moving along really nicely, and keep that momentum going. So that's kind of how I feel about that.
Thank you. How do you believe that the village council can most impact Oxford residents?
I think communication is the biggest thing. When you communicate with anybody or a city, you're doing the right thing because a lot of people don't know what's going on. They just hear, but this neighbor said about that, and this neighbor said about that. And it's not maybe the full picture of everything. So being transparent and, I don't know, I just sold this out at you, but maybe a newsletter that comes out a little more often. You know, these are things we're working on and FYI. You know, if you have an interest, you wanna speak up, come on in, and we'll talk about it. Be one thing.
If you're not chosen to fill this vacancy, are you interested in serving vacancy, filling vacancy on one of our own boards and conditions? I guess they always talk like this, you're gonna use students.
Gotcha.
A planning commission, DVA, board of appeals, there's always vacancies.
Right, right. I would consider it, I'll put it that way. I would consider it. I can't say flat out that's the one I want, but I would consider it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your time and thank you for coming today.
All right, you're welcome.
Do you guys want some time to talk? Any can?
I would, but I think we've been up to five correct.
Okay, yeah, yes, but if they wanna come in and, I guess if Joel was to know, we're gonna have a discussion about them and come on up and have a chat. Is that where he's going?
I don't know. He's very quick.
Very speedy tonight.
I don't know how, he only drinks decaf, so.
Seriously. Those decaf people are sneaky.
Can't trust people in those places.
Everyone's fine, they're all hard times. Like, what are you drinking, decaf?
Are we making the appointment tonight?
Yeah, we have to. Do you wanna have a discussion first? Well, I guess it's still up to anybody who wants a discussion.
I just told them that kind of what you would wish, if you guys might want a couple minutes or not. And I said, that's fine, they're willing, but if you'd like to bring them back in now, that's good.
We do wanna have some discussion, but.
It's up to them.
I told them that's what your thought was, that you guys might wanna take a couple minutes and discuss, and then perhaps bring them back in, so to enter a few minutes. And I thought we'll find out, let them know.
Do we want to take a short recess?
Want to go?
Boy, Joe, your face is broke.
I'm not part of that decision, so.
No.
No, just continue.
I'm poker face.
Moby's handled this before because he's been on council before when there was vacancies. Was it something that were like?
No, it's always hard because really, they're all qualified, they're all good applicants.
I think in the past, though, you've had some discussions before you bring them back in. Wouldn't that sue you? Is that kind of how we did it before, we would discuss and then bring them back in?
Yes.
It's kind of embarrassing to talk to anyone.
Yeah, right.
So could you ask them if it's okay?
I kind of already said that, so I think they're gonna want just a few minutes to discuss and then bring you back in. And they said, oh, that's all fine, they're all just visiting, have a good time.
All right, well, let's just.
I'll just go back over there, just let them know it'll be just a couple minutes.
All right, Joe, we'll call you if we can just. Hold on, Joe.
Any initial reaction?
We had some very good applicants.
Wow, you guys, yeah.
They were a tough decision.
Yes.
I think we've fulfilled four spots, though. I mean, like, we got enough vacancies, right? They're all great for everything, that's so tough.
Yeah, I think they each had their own strengths. I don't know, I guess I'll be the first to throw out two names that immediately stood out to me. Emily and Jacob stood out to me. I think of creating a well-balanced council, in terms of creating a well-balanced council.
I agree, I am for, I don't know, just, this is so weird, like, what else? Like, I don't know how to like say things, right? But I agree the same, I liked all of them. I am leaning towards Emily for the position. And I think we can't go wrong with any of them.
You're right.
I will say I like Jacob's answers, the social media, that he's, and he's gonna live here forever. I like his interest.
Maybe like his house.
Moby doesn't, it doesn't eclipse part of it. Of course, it's a house. But I like his answers.
So I'll make a motion to appoint Jacob Nicosia to village council for to fill the vacancy of Ashford.
I think they should get their motion.
Okay.
We're making decisions.
Will you make a motion?
Motion, there is no second motion.
You pause the motions that Robert's.
I don't know how uncomfortable we want to make them with me making a motion from their.
I was not here. I was totally agreeing.
When I interviewed her vacancy, I then left after I didn't come back in. So it's up, they don't, they don't have to feel the need to return either. It's totally up to them, so.
Oh, can I say a little bit? My thing about Emily was that she's the one who ran the election before you.
Council remains an open session.
What'd you say, Bob?
You remain an open session, so.
Okay, so we were able to have like a minute discussion. This was council and recognized that every person that interviewed was fantastic. And so it's a very difficult decision to make. And so I'm just going to throw out a motion on the floor for consideration and then we can have further discussion or see where it goes. So I move to appoint Jacob Negocia to the vacancy village council to fill the remainder term for which Ashley Ross vacated her time from. Is there a second?
I'll support.
Any discussion?
I, this is a terrible decision for all of us to make. Obviously, I think we.
Obviously, you're all well. And it's, we know, some of us know different ones of you and it's appreciated you all came in and made a hard choice.
I, we've talked about that we can't go wrong with any of the four of you here. I personally, what put me slight above in the decision-making was I recognized that Emily has ran an election before. And so that would be my decision, my choice and not to say no for any, you know, other reason. But I would very much so, I think we have a planning commission spot, right?
We definitely plan commission vacancy for appeals and DDA to maybe having requirements.
Somebody would want to, one of you would want to take that spot as well.
Alright, let's, I'll definitely be reaching out to everyone after the meeting to see where the interest is for other vacancies. Let's do a roll call vote unless there's further discussion. Okay, so we need, we need at least three yeses.
Borjo?
No.
Helmut?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes. Motion carries. Congratulations and thank you so much for everyone. I have all your contact information. And I'll definitely be reaching out. So our clerk and manager will be in touch.
Does that mean you're just council here right now?
Nope, for the next.
That's a sporn.
Yep, yeah. So you'll be sworn in the next council meeting and he'll be joining us up here, so.
Wait, you're going to change your next name? Just let the B feel like the B.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you, Evan, and all of you for putting in the work and effort and wanting to serve the community.
Appreciate it. Alright, we will move on to nine B. DDA requested the social district into Centennial Park.
So you have a memo from, and myself. Mine was more related to the ordinance and stuff. And then something from Chief Solow, his take on it. I did mention my outline on the map incorrectly. I was, the yellow was referred to as the new expanded area when actually it's blue, as you probably figured out. But I think it's pretty straightforward. Again, my one concern was my oversight a couple of years ago when we passed this about the amendment to the ordinance that we should have done at that time about open, open spaces. So regardless of whether this expansion takes place or not, which I think I supported, something we have to take up.
Yeah. I don't think council will be unanimous on this. I think we'll need some discussion unless there's been some change of mind on this. But I think it's a great idea. Our police chief has this memo that says, you know, you haven't noticed anything get out of hand. You don't really expect our, you know, paying one of the Centennial Park or Centennial Park if they've had a dream to have any additional, you know, kind of any issues. So I think it would be great. I think we're not kind of confusing to residents too, that you can be on the sidewalk, but you can't go in the grass. And it might be kind of blurred at times anyway. And so anything we can do to support the local businesses and just getting people into town, even if that's, you know, allow them to purchase a drink and sit down and drink it in the park. I think our residents are respectful, even our visitors who come into town for the concerts and such, that it's not Oxford's type of place. It's going to hopefully have any problems with that, so.
I would say, I, witches night out, I'm going to give up. That is what kind of put me in the decision that it should be approved is we had some witches who were just ordered a drink. And they literally got it to go sit in the benches there. And the police officer's telling them they can't go there and they're so confused. It's social districting. I don't understand. I just want to sit on that table. And they literally couldn't sit at the table, but they could sit two feet over. And I get it, you're going to have that at any boundary line, but man, those tables look good.
Highly enough, I have concerns about this.
I thought you would.
I mean, I don't think it was twenty years ago, man, let's do this. And I'd be bored, drinks all over the place in there. I think it could become a problem when there's an event in the park. Concerts in the park, go sit there, just an hour at a concert. I can put down a lot of drinks in an hour. I just think it could be a problem. I don't think the park was.
Have we had any issues with people who aren't purchasing it from one of our restaurants? Just open.
If this does become a problem, could we remove the area from the social district?
Yes. So it's, you go through the park and you can reach the shops that are, or whatever.
Five One Towne building, right?
That building, right.
There's a men's drinking bar, a hair salon, a drugstore, right?
You can walk down the sidewalk. Yeah.
Can you carry an alcoholic beverage into another shop?
You kind of, they don't mind.
I mean, with the discretion.
You mean in that alcoholic?
Right, correct.
Yeah, they were going into the.
So as long as they don't serve.
Unless they, unless they throw in all food.
Yeah, so as long as they're not serving, but you cannot carry it into another establishment that serves. And the part about, because I worried about this too when we were even talking about social districts, the conversation. I think the nice thing is, is that you have to go into the business to purchase the beverage. So even if you are consuming a lot, even if it is an hour or two hour concert, it would still fall on that restaurant or that bar to not serve you the next drink, just like if you were in there. We have found that because you can't carry across M24, there are only a couple of bars on that street. And to be honest, most of them are going into the OX to purchase their beverages and going back to the same bartender every single time. I think that right now it's really hard because we cut that line at the park. So even though Five One Diner at the time didn't serve alcohol, whatever does go in that. And then we've gotten pushed back from the shops there because they feel excluded from social district because you can't carry a beverage there. But every other store downtown you can. So not that we were trying to exclude them in the first place, but it just made sense to introduce it. And now that we feel comfortable, you know, I talk with the officers every single event and with chief, did we have any problems, you know? We're at every single event watching too. I'm definitely one that if I felt like it was going to be a problem, I'd probably be the first one to say like, this is not a good idea, calling up with an alcoholic brother in my house. So I'm very, I'm very particular about this.
For a restaurant that has an open window right there in the summer, would they be able to just like formalize like outside or would they have to physically go into that restaurant?
They last year, you're speaking about Maro Maro, they did require you to either be sitting on the stools there to purchase your drink or go right inside to order from a waitress. They can't just formalize, take and go.
So I get my drink from one of the wonderful stations in the town. I take my cup, I don't walk in streets and I'm drinking. What I do, they come at the end of the day.
Yep, so in a garbage camp, we have had.
Or I take it home and refill that. I bring it back to the next concert in the park. And I'm just filling it with my own alcohol because I got a cup from the establishment.
So I will say that it is specific to, it has to be logoed by the establishment and it's a sticker that only the DDA provides to them. And yes, you could do that, but I mean, I guess that's like anything. You could bring a tumbler and say that there's water in it. It's really on that specific person.
I mean, that's kind of against social districting in general, which we've already approved.
Aren't the stickers paper anyways?
Think back to.
They're plastic stickers that are on the cups, but if they walk into the parking lot and one of the officers sees them, that's not a social district. So they really should be stopped at that point. You're told to throw the cup away.
Any comments? I move to approve the expansion of social district commons area for January South Washington, South of Denison Street, including Centennial Park as noted on the map in our meeting text.
Support.
Motion made by Cook, supported by Kent. Any discussion? Do a roll call vote.
Yep, yes. Borjo?
Yes.
Helmut?
No.
Cook?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
Should we do the first reading?
So as I mentioned in my memo, there's also the issue of ordinance that regardless, the type of recommendation that was there.
So you would need a motion to do the first reading of ordinance.
By simply adding those few words to the item B, is it?
Where's that? I'm sorry, I'm not seeing.
On the memo for the social district, there's two recommendations in the memo.
Is there anyone who has a motion?
I would make a motion that we add in the first reading for ordinance number two sixty-six. One, two. Can I say? That's ordinance two sixty-six, that's the end. End of the section B. Do we have to read the whole thing?
No.
To add the wording at the end of except and duly authorized social district commons areas.
To the end of section B.
To the end of section B.
Yeah, so.
Oh, there it is. Section forty-two dash one thirty-three. I was looking at the wrong thing. Sorry.
She was, oh, this one.
Oh, ordinance number, yeah, that's what was passed.
Yeah, second of time. So approve the first reading of the proposed, I'll redo it. So it's pretty. I would make a motion to approve the first reading of the proposed ordinance amended to section forty-two, one thirty-three by adding quote, except and duly authorized social district commons areas and quote, to the end of section B.
Common being singular, right?
Common being singular. That was hard.
Commons.
Yeah.
Commons area.
When we wrote it, I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
That's not nice.
It's written as common, so I won't be picky, but it is a first reading.
Well.
You're right. You read it right. You said.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
It's to the commons.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, so you read it, but it's not written, right?
It's just not written right. Thanks.
So we have a motion?
Second?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, motion made by Borjo, seconded by Cook. Any discussion on the motion?
Do we need to schedule a second one now?
Hearing none, well, capo.
Cook?
Yes.
Borjo?
Yes.
Helmut?
No.
Ken?
Yes.
Motion carries. We're under nine D. Assistant's fiscal year twenty twenty. Sponsorship. So the expert dance and youth assistance request sponsorship of village Oxford in amount of twenty-five hundred. Am I reading that right?
Yeah, let me catch up with my stuff here. Nine D. So this came about when I got a call from a woman, I command believe, that the expert assistance, because we don't just send them a check. They send us requests for sponsorship each year. And so we would send, cut the check then because we have to kind of begin something, an invoice, so to speak. And, you know, I guess we had budgeted for it. We'd never received anything from them. I think it was two hundred and twenty-one. So if you look, I think it's the third item in there. It's activity report, village Oxford. It's mostly on top. It looks like a printout vendor activity. You'll see we have invoice and a check in twenty nineteen, an invoice and a check in twenty twenty, an invoice and a check in twenty-two. We never had an invoice or a check in budget for twenty-one. And that just kind of shows that, and we did budget for it, we just never spent money. So their request to us was, would we consider paying them that because they forgot to send it to us, we forgot and we didn't, how late did we pay it? So we obviously had money left over that year because this was unspent. And so I said, well, all I can do is take it to the proper ask. Chief Solow has just provided a memo just about his work with youth assistance. And we do call, rather than the police department, is also on youth assistance. So that's kind of where we're at. And we would do a simple budget amendment, DB, if you approve it, then because we'd be paying it twice in this budget year.
Okay. Move to approve the sponsorship request for the expert dance and youth assistance for fiscal year twenty twenty-two for the funds that we have available, an amount of twenty-five hundred dollars.
Support.
Motion made by Cook, supported by Helmut. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Borjo?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Helmut?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Nine D, special event application, twenty twenty-three oh two Easter egg hunt, Centennial Park.
As I mentioned in there, this is a really small Centennial Park event. They've done it a couple of years ago. Pretty straightforward. I've seen the reason. They have everything in place. Insurance already in place for them to do it. I would recommend that you approve it.
Make sure they know they can drink. Bring some more kids.
What am I not completed then?
Move to approve special event application, twenty twenty-three oh two as presented.
Support.
Motion made by Cook, supported by Helmut. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, nay? Motion carries. F, special event application, twenty twenty-three oh one, turkey trap.
And again, this is a rather large scale, involved one. Chief Solow or myself, I've already reached out to the fire department. It could drag all the township down Palan Trail. Palan Trail, management council approved it on January nineteenth, meaning that it's their special event process. The gentleman puts on the race. It's a four-profit venture. He knows there's going to be costs for police, DPW barricades. We're talking Thanksgiving morning race, we're looking DPW overtime and things like that. We were trying to meet yet this week with Mr. Brantley and Chief Solow to get out of those costs, get our ducks in a row better. So we provide them a better understanding of those costs. And go from there, I guess, depending on what those costs are and the reaction from the applicant. If it's something that he feels is still worth bringing and moving forward, it'll get him council meetings, I'll check him next month.
There's no action now.
But it's a larger advance, I'll give you all the information this month. So if you have any questions that come up, you can check with us.
Great. Any questions to council at this time? Hearing none, move to the DDA board, recommendation for executive director salary increase, current ordinance 22-4. My understanding is this salary increase was approved by the DDA, just needs to go before council for final approval per the ordinance. We have separate questions, Coach.
Correct, this is something that I think has been overlooked over the years past. Terry mentioned it a couple of years ago in the ordinance, and I think it was kind of too late at that time. This year, I sent it out to the DDA chair in advance of it, so they could just make sure we followed it as good.
Move to approve the salary increase as presented for our DDA executive director.
Support.
Motion made by Cook, supported by Borjo. Any discussion?
I just want to say, I think eight percent is excessive.
Not even cost of living.
Pardon me?
Cost of living is up there.
What's cost of living?
Probably more than that.
I don't think cost of living is over eight percent.
Yeah.
At one point it was definitely.
Joe, do you know what cost of living is?
I don't know if inflation or cost of living.
I think it was hovering around eight, nine.
$1.00. Inflation maybe, eight percent, not cost of living.
Cost of living is usually around 2.5.
Oh, not anymore.
Not anymore.
I think by the end of last year, it was around eight, it may be like six and a half now, but.
I think 27.
What are you reading?
Uh, social security.
I know most places do not keep up, but I'm happy for us to-
Social security had an 8.7 cost of living adjustment.
Thank you for that. Any further discussion?
I'm still checking. Thank you. On the floor, I think it's excessive. I just wanted to see.
Sure.
I gave the ground, it was on the floor.
And I don't know that this is cost of living, this could be performance, I assume as well, but I'm just saying, at least cost of living.
When did we say the last time this position got an increase?
Like last year, I think Terry had something there.
Oh, that was last year.
Was it last year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Over here.
Yeah.
Okay.
We just hadn't recognized that it was in the ordinance that they, it was 72 approval of council.
I see.
Let's go down.
Eight point seven. So we're below eight point seven?
I think, no, just kidding.
Go ahead. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote.
Helman?
No.
Kemp?
Yes.
Borjo?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Next up is the NOTA agreement.
Lynn, do you want to speak?
Senator, I'm happy to answer questions or speak if you'd like.
Come up so we can see you.
I'm so glad you're here. Thanks, Lynn.
Welcome.
Good evening, thank you. Linda Maskey, NOTA Director. And the agreement before you tonight is the agreement between NOTA, public transportation agreement between NOTA and Oakland County. It's due to the millage that was passed, the Oakland County Transit Millage, passed last November. It replaced the NOTA millage, which was .25, it's now, excuse me, it's now collecting .95 mills for 10 years. And in that millage, they named four providers to run this service. It was NOTA, WOTA, which is the West Oakland Transit, OPC and SMART. And so this agreement has, we've been working with the Oakland County and their attorney, our attorney, our NOTA attorney, John Sterren, all of the community attorneys, including Bob Davis has been part of this, and Lori is obviously on our board as well. And the NOTA board has approved this contract, and it's just subject to approval of the six municipalities, which is Orient, Oxford and Anderson Townships, and then the three villages, Leonard, Oxford and Orient. The, excuse me, the agreement has a three-year contract, but it's a one-year finance budget. So basically, they're, you know, we're just kind of starting to see where this is going. They originally guaranteed us to $2 million, and now part of this budget that they're presenting, which is passed Oakland County's Economic Development Committee and the Finance Committee, it'll pass the board on Thursday. But they are, they are scheduled to give us $2,847,605 for the first year. And that's, that is just operational. Majority of that is just going to be for NOTA only. There's going to be an expansion of NOTA services just for our residents of three. So we're going to go from 17 routes to 20 routes. And they're asking us to do three expansion routes, and that's going to be expansion, most likely into Brandon and Independence is probably what we're going to be looking at expanding to the first year, with the hopes over the next 10 years that we could go maybe into Groveland and Holly. And that would be the extent of what NOTA would probably take over. OPC doesn't really have a place to go, so they're kind of landlocked. WOTA on the west end has Springfield and a lot of the Oakland areas that they're going to look at, trying to have coverage. The idea for this, this transportation help is to, that we're all working together, we're all looking at having the same dispatch system, so that we can, once we get that, which is going to take probably a year, but then we can, if someone wants to go somewhere else in Oakland County, we can work together to get that person a ride. Oakland County has also asked that we have continuity of rides, so that's why we started charging $2 a ride effective February 1st. We were charging $1 and $2 before COVID, but then when COVID happened, we actually stopped charging altogether. But the Oakland County's asked for us to all be $2 a ride every stop, so we did start that February 1st. And they also asked us to all have similar amounts of pay for our drivers, so we increased our, our pay rate, we went from 16, I think 65 to $20 an hour. And Oakland County asked us to do that as well, so that along with the benefit package, which we never had at NOTA. So although now we're not competing for drivers between organizations, we're really working together and looking forward to actually seeing where this will go. Is there anything?
So, as Lynn knows, I, I was a little, I had a voice in this. I think, I think we had some positive impacts out of some of the issues that we raised. And I just want to be clear with you that we weren't in any way, you know, attacking the form of the contract. We were, I kind of got involved on the app of the village and Addison and Leonard and working, saying, what is the agreement not saying that I think it needs to say? Because I think it had to be clear, and it needs to be clear, to do what this agreement is not doing. And so I worked with Lynn and John Sterren, who have known for a hundred years, and a county lawyer who's very easy to work with. And we created a mechanism of a resolution that the county now agrees, okay, so things that are not happening, the county is not going to own any of the NOTA assets, and what it is NOTA. The county is not going to take operational control over NOTA. NOTA is going to run NOTA as it has. The county, even though you're going to get this money back into NOTA, is not going to own the assets that is purchased, or that is purchased of that money. NOTA remains NOTA. None of the expanded services allow those communities to become members of NOTA. So NOTA stays the same. And, and it was a little, you know, and I understood when I raised these issues that, well, you know, the agreement didn't say we're taking over, I just wanted to say it isn't, so that everyone would be comfortable on it. And I'm very comfortable with where we're at. We're closely with Lynn and John on this. It seemed like, it was like a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday type kind of deal. I mean, we were definitely working on this on a Sunday. And I think we got it to the place where it needs to be with clarity. And I want to thank you, Lynn, for being so instrumental in working on this.
Well, honestly, I can't believe you showed up when, the day that you showed up.
Well, I was actually, I was actually just out of intensive care the other day. And everyone's going, who's that? I go, that's an angry nurse yelling at me. And I'm going, it's got to say this, it's got to say this. And she's like, calm down, calm down.
That's unbelievable.
We had, it was a good meeting, and we got done what we needed to do.
We did. And the other good thing is, this does not include vehicles, so we actually have 10 vehicles on order that the county has, took it out of the budget because they want to see if they can get grant funding to cover those. But they're going to look at, the earliest those vehicles are going to come in are late summer, and then they're going to revisit that, and hopefully get us additional vehicles. So that's going to be great too. They're also paying for our parking lot expansion that we had, I kind of started last year and was going to go through, NOTA was planning on paying for it, but they included $650,000 to cover our parking lot expansion and fuel center. So that's also good.
Great service, great leadership, NOTA.
Is there a plan to expand who's eligible for ridership?
Yes, so they really want it to be, they want to be able to offer transportation to people in Oakland County. Are you talking about just the-
Categories.
Categories, meaning like into general public?
The general public, yes. Or both, whatever you're-
So we're starting out and expanding just for seniors, disabled, low income. Those are kind of the three that we are currently doing, so there, I believe that this, there's not enough money to go around to serve just general public. I think that SMART, or SMART, it's the county, it's not, it's SMART. The county would love to have the public all be able to have rides. They're looking at different ways, like microtransit systems on SMART, Mr. Service with VIA, and, and that's a pilot program right now. So they're looking at potentially if that goes, maybe having a similar model to that for, for the general public. It's just going to take time, and this is going to, this is going to take a long time before it gets developed. They're looking at doing some additional ride halls. Right now, it's just on Rochester Road, going into Rochester. They were talking about doing on Lepire Road, but I did not see that in the latest plan. They're looking at some more additional extensions off of 59 and whatnot, but it's going to take time. I think that they want to grow to, they want to start with the seniors disabled, see where the money goes and where the needs are, and then hopefully connect it further.
Sounds great. So the resolution that is prepared, I'm looking at my phone, because I don't have it on paper for some reason, but all these kind of special things that we negotiated, that's all agreed to with the company?
So, so, so the county lawyer and I worked in, and we didn't want to modify the agreement itself, because they want a continuity in the agreement. And NOTA had special concerns, and I was raising that probably were not the concerns of OPC, SMART, or even WOTA at this point. So what the agreement was reached is that the, if, first of all, all the communities involved have to pass this or fails. Second, the county is obligated to pass a resolution that we created that laid out all these, you're not going to be an owner, you're not going to- And so if that resolution doesn't pass, then all of this fails. So the resolution accompanies the agreement into the county commission, we have to approve both, which I think-
They did. Well, the, the two committees approved it, and so now we're pushing on the Thursday.
Probably this Thursday.
Because it was a unanimous vote.
It was, it was all, yes. OPC passed it, WOTA passed it.
Has any of the other communities met yet?
Just-
Oh, Leonard, Leonard passed, right?
Leonard passed it last night.
I talked to Mike McDowell today, he confirmed.
Village of Lake Hurry didn't get it out in time to go last night, but they're going to do it in two weeks, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for all your work on this.
Oh, you're welcome, thank you.
Really great.
That was good, good project. Thanks, Lori, for your assistance. That's our wrap.
Yeah, yes, it was really great. Do you have any questions?
It was a lot of reading, Lori, very fast, wasn't it?
Yeah, I, that was a lot. This whole thing was a lot. And it was so fast, and it was just, there wasn't a lot of, I don't know how I did it, Lynn, and I, I mean, and yet, meeting with a father, a nurse in the background.
Well, the reason it was pushed is because they already started, they've already collected taxes, and so people are expecting answers, and they want, the Oakland County is really wanting to just give the money to someone, and so they're looking to get us some money as soon as possible, so it's, there's a timeline because they want to see.
When you put out a millage and you collect the money, the folks generally expect you to do what you said you were going to do with it.
Maybe?
Yeah. Good deal.
Thank you, thank you. So I move, opposed resolution 2023-03 as presented.
Support.
Motion made by Cook, supported by Kemp. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Helman?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Borjo?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes. Motion carries. Number 10, there are no items in which we consent to judge of your second round of public comment, but anyone like to address counsel at the moment?
Hi, how are you all? I'm doing good.
We're happy to have you.
Someone that's supposed to be known to be quiet. Just a couple things. Noted from this evening, when you had discussed putting a crosswalk at Oxford or near Oxford Elementary, if I heard you correctly, I think you said you were going to put it more toward the south end of that facility. I think that's a great idea. I don't know if any of you have ever been there during peak traffic season, but the cars are lined up down to this gentleman's home, even beyond. So to have the crossover in that traffic, I think is a recipe for disaster. So putting it that way is great. Oh, I thought it gets you closer to the library, which I'm not sure. The other thing that I just want to do is take off my librarian hat for a moment and just remind you that I'm a trustee on the Four County Community Foundation Board. As probably some of you are aware, we now have a fund, an endowed fund, at the Four County Community Foundation for Oxford specific. Of course, there are other funds at the foundation that you can apply for grants to support community needs, but Oxford now has its own individual endowed fund, and we're very pleased to announce that. So as you have needs for the community, I sit on Grant Review Committee as well as Scholarships Committee at the foundation, so I love to be able, I've seen a lot of grants from township, just saying. But I'm not, I'm not seeing any that I'm aware of coming from the region, so certainly would encourage you to do that.
Thank you for that.
It's my pleasure. The only other comment I would make, and I have a lot of respect for all of you on this council, and I know you have to make difficult decisions, but I'm just going to say, not as your librarian, not as the foundation, has nothing to do with this, my personal opinion on the decision to extend drinking into Centennial Park. I don't know, but call me traditional, but I think that the park is supposed to be someplace for family to gather, and I think Lynn caught the nail on the head when she said, let them know that they can drink during egg hunting, or whatever it is, Easter egg hunting. I just don't find it appropriate to have drinking in the park. That's my personal opinion. I know I don't pay taxes here anymore, but certainly I just wanted to make that known. But I do appreciate, aside from that, everything that you bring to the table. I want to congratulate the newest member of your council. It's, it's nice to see someone willing to step up who cares a lot about this community, like many of you, and to have some diversity on this board too.
It's going to be a man.
So, so thank you so much.
Thanks for your time, we appreciate you. Any other public comment? Hearing none, we'll go to committee reports. Anything we'd like to add for NOTA, Lori?
No, it's just, I mean, this is, there's been a lot going on with NOTA, and it's happening fast. Thank you to Joe for finding the problems with the parking lot, so it didn't get done last year. I mean, it was, NOTA parking was really, it was supposed to have gotten done last year. There's a few things that came up, kind of delayed it in weather, and it got too late, and it ended up being perfect. There's a lot to be done, vehicles to be purchased, and overall, it's looking pretty good so far, really, thanks to all. There's been, Lynn had mentioned getting the benefits and pay raises out, and just being a friendly employer for the village. Been good all around, so there's a lot going on, and I'm sure there's a lot that I'll have to tell you about in the next year.
Wonderful, thank you. Planning Commission and Cable Commission?
The Planning Commission approved the slave plan, we buy a slave plan for the car washed on April 24th, so they can, you also approved a sign, but for the life of me, I They also approved a sign, but for the life of me, I can't remember whose sign it was.
The president, please.
President Burchett. Yeah, the vice. I think that was it.
I heard you had a new chair, things, there was like a term on it?
Yeah, Justin is no longer the chairperson.
Scott.
Pardon me?
Scott.
Scott, that's, he's the new chairperson.
He's the chairperson.
There was a lot of options. But he's a good guy. He'll do fine.
Great.
The official members can't be chair.
Right.
It was a devil.
It's the thing, it's the other plank. Now, the Cable Commission, that, just basically housecleaning business, but we are doing the performance evaluations, and I'm on the committee, I'm on the personnel committee, so we're going to do Terry's performance evaluations weekend, and that'll be on the next agenda.
Thank you. DDA, Dr. Westbrook, would you mind? If anybody has an update?
So we ended our last year, we kind of got our stats in order with over $350,000 in grants, and we will be starting the Consumers Energy Project and T-Mobile Project as soon as the ground breaks here. We just were able to work with a couple of owners that are coming into town to fill some vacant buildings, so you guys can look forward to that. We were able to purchase the trolley and worked with Noda. Thank you, Noda, for being so wonderful and hiring some additional drivers for us, too. They're also handling a part of the insurance. But we have Liv that's come forth with a year-long sponsorship for our trolley, so we actually start to run this Thursday. It's in great shape now. The DDA for Oxford purchased it, but then Lake Orient put in the funds to fix it. So last year, we had some unfortunate things happen with it, and some oil leaks and things like that, where it had to kind of be out of commissions, which is up in this year, which is nice. We have, yes, not no way, that's not true. Restaurant facilities coming up, February 27th through March 3rd, that will be one of our stronger gather events with Lake Orient. The trolley will be running to support that, so please go and support your local restaurants. We did just pass our national accreditation a week ago Monday, so that's a really big deal. We had new accreditation standards that were much more difficult this time to pass. So we passed, and actually, one of the things that they mentioned is how well we are running, how smoothly we're running, but how much support that we have from the community and local businesses that we haven't had in the past. In March, we'll be starting a downtown passport to support sales in both Lake Orient and Oxford. If you haven't visited Fletchie's in the district, it's the new barbecue place in town. It used to be where Chichi's Chocolate was, and we're really moving forward with a lot. So it's a good time to be in Oxford right now and on the DDA board, and I know you guys have to fill one of our spots soon, so I don't know if you're going to throw him into the fire right away, but.
I'll probably attend a couple meetings first.
Yeah, and just as a side note, I just wanted to mention that that 8% was not only getting over $350,000 in grants this year, but it's also cost of living and for a family of four in Oakland County.
Thank you so much.
Still think we've gotten excessive. Just saying.
Come to my office.
Come to my office, I'll show you who needs a raise.
Oh, you're true.
I was not able to be there, but I believe it was, you were not able to be there either.
I was, I was telling them that they, that's meeting that they approved the special bed app last month, and now we meet tomorrow.
Yes.
It's in Addison.
Yes, we're going to be, continue to talk with the agreement with Linda from her contract, as well as updating their website.
I'll attend tomorrow in your absence. Curtis already offered to shut me.
Perk. Manager, clerk, staff attorney reports, Mr. Mador.
Yeah, a couple things. So in your, when we were taking out the social district discussion, part of the packet was the downtown Oxford Management and Maintenance Plan. That was one of the requirements for State Mission, and it was in your packet because if you looked on page two towards the bottom, highlighted, it's, the management maintenance plan shall be included in any future downtown Oxford district reviews conducted by the Village of Oxford or other entities. So that's part of the reason why it was in there. Another reason was just a refresher, I guess. And to your point, well, the district hours are noon to midnight, so they better not be drinking while they're on eggs. That's the one. So.
I was ready.
A couple weeks ago, I was out in Lansing, that, that Curtis has been very spearheading the certificate of need, a discussion of Lansing, they had a meeting out there at the Department of Health. I spoke up, we spoke up, we had a, Chief Majeski spoke up, did a very good job. Coming out of that, and I'm sure Jack will speak to that a lot at their meeting tomorrow, it's a, a new committee that's going to be put together, a staff committee, I think they call it, which has a certain timeline, has to come back with some recommendations. So I think it was successful turn of events that time.
Thank you for attending that.
Yeah, and I stuck around and visited state reps, state senators and stuff, and so I'm coming home down I-69, and right near Duran, someone pulled up next to me, I'm not paying attention, I look, man, who is it? It's Ashley Ross. You know, hey, this is like two weeks ago.
Oh, my God.
So coming home from her job out there, apparently.
Yeah.
Who would it, weird timing, right?
That's so funny.
We, we have a full-time officer position. We had one of our most recent hires, is no longer with us. They were under appropriation for one year, it's one of those try us, I'll try you out periods. So chief has reached out and has something he can break, we're looking at. So hopefully, we won't go too long with that vacancy. Last week, Waldorf and Sons was in to do the fire hydrants. There's four fire, fire hydrants that were part of the Hudson Madison project. The fire hydrants took eight, nine months to get here. They finally arrived in February, first product of February, I believe, so luckily the weather changed, they were able to get one in on Friday. Unfortunately, they were going to be back yesterday and today, but they are also the ones doing all the water main repairs in the city plant. So they were tied up, I think, ever since that happened. I spoke to an ordnance at Waldorf today. They hope perhaps, whether it's dependent, they'll be back later today, or later this week to give another hydrant, there's three more yet to install. Part of the project expanded a little bit on the north side of the church there. Drainies was issued even after the project was laid out, just some curbing had to be added there, and some new sidewalk to correct that drainage issue, so that'll be taken care of as well. And that's about it. The ordinances that were food truck ordinance and then the fire ordinance, both fire protection ordinance, fire protection ordinance goes in Oracle Cloud, and I communicated back with the Fire Department again today about that on that, that we're going to be very involved. There are some areas in our ordinance that speak to fire hydrants and who takes a lot of services and how they're recorded, a lot of it pertains to the fire chief and stuff, but I think down bracket, it's a bit more appropriate for those areas, and we want to make sure, if we want to amend that ordinance, to make sure it's in, in Landlaw's nowadays interest as well. And then the food truck ordinance, as I mentioned to you guys in an email a week or two ago, we already have a food and food establishment ordinance that, rather than just taking our food truck ordinance that the township approved and the Fire Department supports, we could tweak that a little bit and just adopt it, but I think it's better to fit inside of our current food and food establishment ordinance. So we got to kind of splice it all up now and shove it in where it fits and where it's appropriate. So we'll work on that as well.
Thank you. Van Quin?
Happy Valentine's Day.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I want to remember something.
Just in light of, in light of our FOIA issues, I drafted a new set of policies and procedures for you, it's in your packet, I think. Most importantly for your clerk is, is to have a published summary of your FOIA that is written in accordance with the law in a manner that can be understood by the public. So I did that, and I think you should take a look at. When do you get it, James? I'd like to have us approve that, so the clerk knows that it's going to approve by the village council, put it on our website, and we'll have some protection, I think we'll follow our rules.
Appreciate that. Nice to talk to you.
Chief Sol, your client out there, any, like to say anything?
We stand ready for any projects that you guys have for us.
Don't touch us.
Yeah, well, shh.
Thank you.
All right, that's great, thank you for everything, congratulations to you. I look forward to it. Chief, the chief is expecting. All right, chief, you're expecting, you and your wife are expecting, right? We, yes, I was going to tell Allison that today, today we got a, should to Bishan, his name is Levi, I saw him join our family today, so.
Oh.
Yes, yes, he's, he's, they're at the house right now, so waiting for me to get home.
What are you doing without him here? That's.
Well, see, there's important things we got to get resolved here. And then.
Shout out to Larry.
Oh, great, well, see, he's a homeowner.
Yeah.
She's getting her mom.
She's not ready to share yet, probably.
No.
All right, thank you. Counsel comment, Jorge?
Congratulations, and again, thank you to everybody who, yeah, why, sorry. And no, I don't really have anything else. I enjoy spending my Valentine's Day with you all lovely people, and great night, peace.
Thank you.
Joe?
His name.
The budget.
His name.
We've started the department, that's going.
Not really. Part of, but Don was in Florida all last week, so we're waiting for him to come back, he just got on a straight. So we started, we did, we've had just passing conversations about him this week as well. Chief, we're, this is more regular, with Don's can, oh, we're going to spend a quarter in on our backyard, right? It's a little different, so not as much to do with the police department, but.
Has the DDA started on theirs?
Yeah, and just give me a deadline, whatever, whatever date you need it.
We have that, there's an, according to, second meeting, so.
Yeah, they're on a schedule here.
But we need it before that.
Right, no, I'm just telling her that, that's the drop dead deadline.
That's our deadline, their deadlines before that, because we didn't get it until late last year.
Didn't have a deadline, just need a deadline, guys.
Okay.
Just give me a date.
Yep.
And then just let, what do you know, my husband's having brain surgery, a couple weeks. Don't call me. All I've got is done, I don't even, I'd have a surgery two weeks after that, so.
Good luck with that one.
Don't call me.
They're going to leave you empty. They're going to get that.
It's okay, it's going to be great. He's very excited. They're going to implant something in his head, and then implant something in his chest, and it's fine, things will eventually go away.
Okay.
It's going to work, so.
Will he still like you after?
He doesn't like me now.
Cam?
Welcome, Jacob. From, Joe, could we have an overview of what the year looks like and when things are coming up?
I have nearly done, a couple things I want to plug in, I got a spreadsheet going with various items on. I intended to email it out hard this week, it's just been a year. So it's, it's nearly cooked.
We'll respectfully recuse, excuse your absence if you can't attend anything. I was looking at scheduling workshops, though, for fire safety and social media communications.
I can do, I just kind of know when they are. And you have to watch.
I just don't want to put too much on the plate either, so I don't want to make you feel obligated. But in terms of the events yesterday, I'm pretty curious that it happened, and the fact that Oxford kids are experiencing this twice, the fact that kids have to experience it once, there was a child from Sandy Hook, you know, at MSU yesterday, it's certainly time to pass common sense gun reform.
Thanks. All right, I'm going to move to adjourn at 9:08. Try to keep the tradition by 9 o'clock, but it's been a long meeting, so appreciate your patience and thanks, everybody, for attending tonight. Hold on a minute, say aye.
Aye.